Twenty-two Board of Education meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski, here. Mr. Alex Zdrowich?
Here.
Mrs. Sapersky, here. Dr. Kahn?
Yeah.
Dr. Beer?
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you, and the meeting has been properly posted. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I am looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item four, anti-tobacco poster contest presentation. Ms. Henry, please. Welcome.
Thank you.
I think you turned it off.
Well, now you can hear me. All right. Well, thank you all for having me today. First and foremost, I'd like to apologize. Given the theme of the year, we had some shipping delays on these posters. So I'm happy to be here in June officially to congratulate our seventh-grade tobacco poster contest winners. I'm happy to say this is the 26th year we have hosted this contest in the city of Franklin, and I think that deserves a round of applause. So a little bit of history on the poster contest. Thinking back to 1996, tobacco was a lot different back then. Today, it's rare if you find a teenager or preteen that will use conventional cigarettes. So our poster contest has evolved since the beginning, and now we focus a lot of our efforts on e-cigarette education. We were able to, in partnership with the City of Franklin Health Department and Volition Franklin, provide several presentations to the entirety of the seventh-grade class in February, and then challenged our seventh-grade students to design a poster that will educate their peers on the dangers and the truth about tobacco products. I am very happy to say that we had over 270 submissions this year from our seventh-grade class. So really, a wonderful job. I would also like to mention that this contest is in part sponsored by Cousin Subs. So each student that participated got a coupon for a free five-inch sub. So that kind of sweetened the deal for everyone as well, too. And it is also sponsored and paid for by the City of Franklin Tobacco Licensing Fees. With that, I first, I'll kind of read through the posters of the individuals that were not able to attend the board meeting today. But then I'd like to welcome our winners up, and maybe they can say their name into the microphone, and then kind of walk around and show you guys their posters. All right, so we have Nicholas Strop, Carly Hefter, Kasia Cash, Maya Jinks, Akshaya Nimana, Emma Hill, and Haley Gartman. One other thing I would also like to mention is that because we had such a large submission of posters, we added an additional five honorable mentions. And I realized I did not mention what our students are winning. So along with the sweet Cousin Subs coupon, our top 10 winners were given a $100 gift card, a foam board copy of their poster, and a congratulations certificate from the Health Department. Our honorable mention winners were also awarded a $50 gift card. So with that, we'll have some students come up, and we can just have this microphone right here. Feel free to pop up. I believe we have about eight students in the audience. Would you guys like to come on up? Don't be shy. Everyone loves you here. Bella?
Brooklyn.
Reagan.
Fiona.
Erin.
Kaylin.
Taylor.
Sophia.
All right, all right.
So congratulations, everyone.
Oh, that's very detailed. You were sketching. Very nice. Cute. I wanted to do it at last. Bella tried to make a call.
Doc?
Yeah. Doc, sorry, here. Doc, I think better.
Good job.
Good job.
I'll turn your posters around so everyone can see them. There you go. Good job.
If parents would like a picture, please come on up.
Poor Bella.
She's really near my camera.
Why don't you go to the end there? There you go. They'll be able to see you. All right, good job. Congratulations.
And then before we close, you can also see all of these posters posted on our City of Franklin Health Department Facebook page as well as our Volition Franklin Facebook page. And we'll be working to get them displayed throughout the community throughout the summer. So thank you all again. We really appreciate the partnership with the school district and our ability to help, you know, raise the voice of our young people. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate you all coming. You are certainly welcome to stay for the meeting. But it's a beautiful night, and you're certainly welcome to not stay if you don't. We will not be offended. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, Erin.
All right, Dr. Golden and Dr. Strelleki. I hope I pronounced that right. Been trying all year. For the last two years, I guess. Friends of Franklin, recognition. Ms. Sapersky and Dr. Miller, please.
All right, let's just all kind of gather up here. Come on down. I have with me this evening our nurses, Molly Call and Lori O'Neil, to help me with this recognition along with a board member, Ann Sapersky. So with that, I'm honored to recognize Dr. Ken Strelleki of Children's Hospital and Dr. Patty Golden of Ascension Medical Group for their leadership and support of Franklin Public Schools during the COVID-19 pandemic. Dr. Strelleki and Dr. Golden took time from their very busy schedules, which included providing care to their patients and families during COVID, to be part of our medical advisory team. They met with us on an as-needed basis and bi-monthly to share medical information regarding COVID. They provided us with sound feedback and guidance that helped us make the best decisions to protect our children and keep schools open.
Dr. Golden has been a tireless advocate for the health of children and families and has been a longstanding partner with the City of Franklin Health Department. Even prior to the pandemic, Dr. Golden has been very passionate about our overall wellness initiatives for both staff and students at Franklin Public Schools. Dr. Golden assisted with brainstorming and developing innovative approaches to educate our students and families with a variety of wellness fair activities focused on health promotion and disease prevention. Bringing more than 20 years of experience as a family practice physician to our team, Dr. Golden was happy to assist us with health and safety plans related to COVID-19 at the district level. Dr. Golden played an integral role in ensuring all of our employees had access to receive the COVID-19 vaccine as soon as educators were eligible to do so. She was critically helpful in assisting our processes in arranging a large-scale vaccine clinic at Ascension in the winter and spring of 2021. Dr. Golden was recognized for her work as a leader for statewide emergency preparedness response in navigating the pandemic, and we are so fortunate that she continues to share her expertise in family medicine and champion the work we do serving the health needs of students and families. Our partnership with Dr. Strelleki began several years ago when our health services and student wellness teams identified a need to support and obtain guidance from a local pediatric healthcare provider. We reached out to Franklin Pediatrics at that time, and we were thrilled that Dr. Strelleki was eager to form their relationship with us. We have had the pleasure of working with Dr. Strelleki and his team at Franklin Pediatrics to review the care that we provide to both, to all students and to students with chronic conditions, in additions to seeking out his mentorship for a variety of more specific health services. It's so much easier to call you Dr. Ken than to stumble over your last name over and over. Dr. Strelleki has been instrumental in ensuring that we are able to stack emergency medications available for use if needed in an urgent medical situation. He was also gracious enough to speak with the FHS students in person and via an audio-recorded interview regarding the harmful effects of vaping. He filled the role of being our first health expert interviewee for our Pilot Wellness Podcast, intended to be the start of a series on a variety of wellness topics for students. He was incredibly knowledgeable and had an informative question-to-answer session with our team. Specifically related to COVID-19, Dr. Strelleki helped us understand how the viral infection and the pandemic management in general would impact both the physical and mental health of children. He has kept us informed of strategies and efforts we could use to keep children in the school setting as safe as possible. He continues to be a key advocate for our work, sharing his expertise in pediatric health, and is willing to partner for more strategic processes to help serve the health needs of children. We are grateful to both Dr. Golden and Dr. Strelleki as they are willing to continue this critically important partnership with us.
There have been difficult roads to navigate the last two years, but there have been some positive outcomes. The partnership formed with our community medical advisors and the school district is a valued partnership that we have agreed will continue. Dr. Strelleki and Dr. Golden were extremely grateful for your support, and I personally would like to thank you for holding me up during some difficult times. So thank you so much, and I know everyone looks forward to continuing to work with you. With that? If you'd like to speak, you can.
I'm going to say this. I don't live in Franklin, but in the five years that I have been here, I have always thought you guys are doing an amazing job. Franklin Schools is a group that I look up to. I appreciate everything you are doing. We see kids from all over, and I know you have a variety of viewpoints on a lot of different topics here. But I've always appreciated the way you've approached the last two years and the last five years. And you guys don't get told often enough that you're doing a great job. You guys don't get told you're doing a great job nearly enough, but you are. It has been a joy and a pleasure.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
No. Very good.
Thank you, and thank you for all you've done for us in the last couple of years especially. It's really been a, it's really been a big help to get through all this, get through all that we've been through. So thank you. Community comment. Participants under this agenda item must be residents of the Franklin Public School District or parents guardians of Franklin Public School District students. Must state for the record their full name and address, and must limit their statements to three minutes. We will have a timer tonight with a maximum of 15 minutes for any and all comment. If the community comment is related to an agenda item, the board may respond to that comment either at the end of the community comment session or during the discussion of that agenda item. The board may not discuss a comment or question that does not relate to an agenda item per Board Policy Administrative Rules 8300. Mary Carol Lewich, please.
Hello. Mary Carol Lewich, 8208 West Coventry Drive, Franklin. I'm here tonight as an advocate for Franklin Public Schools and as an advocate for Franklin Public School employees. When I moved into this district 26 years ago, I had no idea what we were moving into because we were coming from Milwaukee and a private school. But I found at the time that my children, I had three at the time when we moved, added a fourth, and they all received excellent educations, mostly because of the people that were educating them, the people who sat on the boards that cared to make sound decisions and cared for the people that worked in the schools. The last couple of years, I think, have been very difficult. I watched you manage some difficult times as well, and I applaud you for your resilience and for the ability to not engage but to try and seek out solutions to the health situation as it was. But that situation has kind of exacerbated other things and has placed a lot of moral stress and moral injury on the people that work in this district. And we were talking with Mr. Milzer and Ms. Lencourt about the fact that we're, we can't get people to fill positions. We have people leaving, quite a few people leaving, and not because they're retiring but because they are no longer willing to work under the conditions that they are being asked to work. We really would like to have, find a mutually beneficial and cooperative relationship with Franklin Public Schools, but we seem to be coming up against building blocks of resistance. And yet, we are the people who help building blocks for every other occupation out there. So we have educational assistants back here who are very interested in their jobs, in the students that they work with. But they also want the respect, and they want economic justice. We have secretaries and office assistants who do a bang-up job, meeting children who are in need of solace or, sorry, I'm speaking longer, solace or care because they're sick or they have to deal with families who are upset about things. They do an awesome job. We have media library technicians that I didn't talk about last month but really should get applause because they do more than just what's done in the library. They also serve in lunchrooms, and they will fill in for teachers if they're not available. We all do more than what we're asked. And so what we're asking you to do is to consider the justice of what you plan to compensate us with. And I'm hoping that you will go to the full 4.7 CPI, which you can do, both for teachers and for support staff, because otherwise, people will continue to feel like they are being disrespected, and they will feel like they are being asked to do more than they possibly can do with less money for their efforts and less dignity and respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Bono.
Hello, my name is Margaret Bono, and my address is 3727, and it's a Milwaukee residence, but I went to Franklin High School and just recently graduated. With that said, I'm speaking on behalf of the budget that you guys will be presenting today, and I've been going to the past couple of board meetings. In retrospect, the possible music cuts. Today, our last board meeting, I gave a representation of what band has meant to me and how you should take me into account of this. But I want to give an analogy of what it's like to many music students, including myself. I personally work as an apprentice at Pain Management, a doctor specialist office. May I add, I got that through our youth apprenticeship program through Inroads. Just putting that out there. I work front desk. I do jobs that many women work full-time to raise a family, but I'm an 18-year-old girl just trying to make a part-time job living. And I would like to give an analogy of what it'd be like if you were to remove one teacher, as it is like removing one doctor. In Pain Management, we deal with many old people. We deal with many workers comp patients who are in pain every single day. Now, now, may I say it's scientific that you can die from pain? I'm not too sure. But many patients claim that they're saying they're in pain. They're in pain. I need help from doctors, nurses. So we, as staff, try and help. Recently, we just lost one of our doctors due to a lawsuit, and we had to reschedule lots of patients. I, as staff, had to break that news to many patients, saying, "Hey, this doctor is no longer a network with our place. We need to reschedule with another doctor." To hear many patients say, "Wow, that's unfortunate. I was spending lots of time with this doctor. How could you do this to me so suddenly?" It hurts to hear. To hear that a provider is taking away from a patient is not much different than a teacher taking away from a student. A teacher that I put time into, years into, trust into, for them to suddenly say, "Sorry, we're out of network with the school," is similar to someone who's relying on a doctor for their treatment plan. So I was driving home from work today, and I knew I was coming to the board meeting, and I was just thinking, "Wow, I have to break this news to patients every day that, 'Sorry, this doctor's out of network. We can reschedule you with someone else,'" but it's not the same. It's not the doctor that they've been working for with years, similar to me. It's not a teacher that I've been working with for years. So we, as humans, we all go to the doctor, and I just would like you to think about, what would it be like if your primary care physician suddenly says, "Sorry, I'm out of network. Good luck"? You don't know what to do. You have to kind of trust in other people, and that's what I'm doing. I'm trusting in you guys that you could keep the teachers that many of us trust every day at school. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula Weckman, please.
Hello. Paula Weckman, 7140 West Woodbury Drive. I'm here tonight regarding item 11, which is the CISA-1 contract that you guys are reviewing and sending on, advancing. So I'm currently the sole parent representative for the PAGE part of CISA, which is the Partnership for Advanced and Gifted Education. And currently, I'm the only one who's actively kind of participating in this for the last three years. So the last three years that I've been involved, we've had three different representatives, educational representatives, and Ms. Cody communicated that there'll be a fourth one next year. So I'm finding frustration in the lack of representation from the district and the momentum that brings in wanting to plan and really advocate for our gifted population. I'm honored to represent Franklin in this way, but I'm also incredibly frustrated when I attend these meetings and I see the lack and disjointed representation from Franklin in planning or even overall advocacy. So the PAGE group that was previously run by other Franklin parent leaders was abandoned in late 2019, early 2020 due to kind of a standstill in what the district was communicating that they were providing for our gifted population versus what the lived experience was for these gifted students and their parents. Currently, on the website, it does have a PAGE portion, but the mission is written there, and incorrectly, I might add, because it is for Partners of Advancement of Gifted Education, not parents. So that partnership is really what I'm kind of seeking tonight, which is to have educator reps and from the district to be a part of this, an active participant in it. And I've not really seen an effort to fill this, the parent portion of this PAGE leadership to meet regularly, as is posted on this website that Franklin has. It has a 2021, 2022 calendar, but there's nothing under it. And the activities that I've communicated through Dawn Blaimow to the gifted population is also not listed there, so it kind of shows me no one's, like, manning that PAGE at all. The involvement in the CISA-1 is very important, and I'm happy that Franklin will be renewing the contract. But I also believe the district and the board need to evaluate consistent leadership, perhaps in the form of a gifted coordinator, as we once had, who's trained and knowledgeable about the unique needs of our gifted population. This coordinator could measure and track the progress of the subpopulation as Franklin does other cohorts of learners to make sure that we are fostering the gifted learner's pursuit of their full potential. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Weckman, I, I am the CISA representative at our, for the board for Franklin, and I will, I will contact you. Obviously, we've had a lot of different leadership here, but I will contact you and, and talk to you about, about this going forward.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So that we can talk about your concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maggie Sapersky, please.
Hi, I'm Maggie Sapersky, 7851 Canterbury Court. And I'm speaking on behalf of the music cuts also. I am a recent graduate of the Franklin Public School District, and I've been involved in band since fifth grade, and I'm looking to continue that at UW Madison in the fall. The four band teachers are now, are the only band teachers I've had since fifth grade. They have watched me grow up and become the musician I am today. They've given me so many opportunities to grow and so much support as I went through middle and high school. A music class is not any regular class, specifically band. If you walk into a math class or a chemistry class, every student is doing the same lab, learning the same content. And yes, some students may need extra explanation or support to understand a concept. But at the end of the class, every student is taking the same test and the same content. In band, there are dozens of instruments that all take years and lifetimes to learn. A flute is not the same as a tuba, and a tuba is not the same as a xylophone. And to learn, these require teachers that are experts on each of these instruments. The retention rates, specifically between middle and high school, are going back up after the terrible pandemic band years and are even higher than pre-pandemic. The continuation of teachers, the relationship with these teachers, and one-on-one lessons to learn skills are the main reasons why students are choosing to continue. If the music department loses educators, I would love to know what the plans are to keep fostering growth and not hindering opportunities. The arts are an outlet for students in the crazy world we live in and a necessary break in the constant APs and capstone classes that we all take. The arts are just as important as any other class and should be treated the same way. Thank you.
Thank you. Bella Merkel, please.
My name is Bella Merkel, and I live at 4446 West Tumble Creek Drive. And I'm going to be talking on the same topic that Maggie was, but I will be speaking on behalf of Lily Herman, a senior at Franklin next year, who unfortunately couldn't be here today, so I'm going to read off what she wanted to say. "I understand wanting to cut two of the music staff due to the lower music enrollment. However, in the long run, this is not beneficial. This plan is thinking short-term, and what will happen in the music department only the next year or two. But this is not planning far enough ahead for the future. This past school year, the FHS music program, specifically the band program, has done better than it ever has in the past. Franklin had the biggest representation at our state solo and ensemble competition this year. Our musical Matilda was nominated for several Jerry Awards, which includes Outstanding Pitt Orchestra. And breaking all previous records, the marching band placed third at state. One of the biggest reasons for our success this year was how accessible teachers and directors were this year. For solo and ensemble, each student would get one-on-one time with a director to help them improve their souls and grow in their musicianship. As for marching band, every director played a key role in helping the band grow, whether it was the visual, brass, woodwind, or percussion aspects of the show. In the end, their presence and help paid off tremendously as we performed better than we ever had at our competitions this year. I understand that by looking at just the simple numbers of enrollment that this budget plan seems like a beneficial option, but numbers are growing faster than they have before. In a typical year, the retention rate of band students from middle school to high school is about 40%. This year, it doubled, and the retention rate is 80%. This is clearly due to how all four of the band directors have a place in both the middle and high school. It helps them build stronger connections with the students so that students want to continue to stay in band. Without all four teachers having a role in the band program, the education that students are getting is unmatched." the education that students are getting is unmatched and helps the students grow in their musicianship. Music education is so much different than any other subject. These teachers are helping students learn dozens of different instruments compared to a subject like math where the same thing is being taught to everyone. Simply put, in order to uphold the standard that Franklin has for success in education, it only makes sense not to approve the budget plan and keep all music educators. Thank you."
Thank you. All right, that is all for community comments. Item seven, consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. So moved.
Second. Our motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. School board announcements, announcements by school board members. So tonight is Mr. Milzer and Dr. Miller's last meeting. So if anybody would like to make any announcement or talk to Dr. Miller or Mr. Milzer, I know I put that out there in an email yesterday. I can see how uncomfortable Judy is, which is just fine. Anyway, if anybody has any announcements, please go ahead. Dr. Khan, please.
So I have been on the board only one year, but what I have seen is, from Judy's perspective, Dr. -- sorry.
You say Judy all good. It's grandma soon. But don't call me grandma.
Judy has been a true advocate of kids' education. Because even in all my meetings, you know, focus has always been education and the well-being of the kids, which I really appreciated. I also appreciated her openness, you know, to the ideas, being always eager to listen, you know, which was very appreciated, Judy. So thank you so much for what you have done, you know. It has been an amazing journey for me, at least for the past one year. I can't say more than that, you know. But it was amazing to interact with you. Thank you so much for what you have done. And Jim, and you're going to be missed, you know, because thank you for your vision for the school district, due to which, you know, you have, at this point, we can say that we are in a stable, secure position financially. So without your foresight and vision, it's probably not possible. So thank you for what you have done.
Thank you. Anyone else, please? Linda?
Sure. So Judy, you have served the Franklin District well in your decades of service, and our community has greatly benefited from your thoughtful reflection of how to best lead us forward. You clearly were dedicated to always learning and getting better. Your last years as superintendent were remarkable in addressing school safety, a future vision in the coherent plan, and a pandemic. We are headed in the right direction. I wish you fun family time and adventure in your well-deserved retirement.
Thank you, Linda.
And Jim? Jim also leaves the Franklin School District after decades of service, through cycles of building projects and into collective bargaining as we knew it, along with dramatic changes in health insurance and OPEBs. And what about information technology with new accounting systems, HR systems, student records, phone systems, networks and security systems? Through it all, there was always Jim with a suit and tie to say, "It's all in the budget somewhere." It's the end of an era. I wish you comfortable clothes and happy travels in your well-deserved retirement.
Thank you. Thank you. Alan, please.
Okay. This district has been blessed having both of you with us. You have had to make tough decisions on a lot of issues, and I will highlight two of those issues: the pandemic, required decisions on the kids being in class, the kids wearing masks, decisions having huge impacts on their lives. There was conflicting information from reliable sources on both sides of those decisions. The decisions were always made with the welfare of the students in mind. The other issue is the hardening of the schools because of shootings around the country. I thank God we have never had to deal with that and pray we never do. Through all of this, you have been professional, always available, and you were determined to get through these challenges. You are caring individuals. You care about the district, the board, the employees, and the kids. So I hope in retirement, you can sleep well after your years in the district, guiding us through those most difficult times. In my mind, Judy's greatest contribution has been the improvement in communication throughout the district. Jim has always been on top of the financial end of things. Recently redoing the bonds and self-insuring our health insurance will save the district about a million dollars a year. It has been an honor and a pleasure to have known you and worked with you, so well done to both of you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Please.
I didn't write any prepared remarks, but I just was reflecting on the fact that so much of the work you do is done out of sort of the public eye, and oftentimes, the only time parents or community members might be aware of you is when they want to call you to complain about something. And I know that to be true because I was often one of those community members prior to my involvement on the board and when I was involved with the Education Foundation. And one thing I appreciated with both of you is that you always took the time to educate me from wherever I was at. So I want to thank you for your patience in bringing me along as a community member and then as a board member. I've learned a lot from both of you, and in researching the history of the school district as part of my little side project, I've learned that you both have truly left this place a far better place than what you found it. And so with that in mind, I hope you have relaxing and fulfilling retirements. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ann, please.
I'm going to echo. You jumped ahead of me. I didn't prepare anything either, but I was thinking about my experiences with both of you. And of course, I first interacted with both of you as a parent and not as a board member. And I would say, I'll start with Jim. I appreciated that you were always willing to respond to me, even though I was generally in a crabby mood when I was reaching out to you. But you were always very passionate about your answers and very calm and thorough and helping me understand, you know, what was going on and pointing out what line in the budget I should look for things or things like that. And then as I became a board member, you took a lot of time to help kind of educate me and, you know, keep me going in the right direction and help me be the best board member that I could be. And so I truly appreciate that as well. And I wish you many happy travels in your retirement and have fun being grandpa.
Thank you.
And Judy, as I was thinking about my time with you, again, similar startup with, you know, having some questions and concerns and a lot of times positive things, I would say as well, but sometimes crabby things. Not only your, you know, your ability to answer my question and help me truly understand and kind of reach me and help me give me the bigger picture, you know, thinking a little bit broader, but also that personal connection. I remember once being in a store in town and seeing you, and you was like, "Oh, hi, Ann, how are you doing?" And I thought, "Wow, the superintendent knows my name." And, you know, cared enough to stop and have a conversation. And that just, it just spoke to me in terms of your connection to the community and your, just kind of your always, your, you know, commitment to our students and the community and just that friendly welcoming atmosphere. So, you know, even when you probably didn't have to. You could have just walked right by him and like, "I'm not looking at her." You stopped and had a conversation with me, and that, even years ago, I still remember. I still remember back to that. So I just think you guys, Franklin has grown and developed a lot because of your leadership, and we are, I am grateful for that leadership. And I wish you, I wish you the best, being a new grandma, being grandpa, retirement adventures, whatever else, sleeping late, wearing, like you said, wearing comfortable clothes, comfortable shoes, all those things. Thank you for your leadership and getting us where we are and setting us on the right track.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Debbie, please.
Are we almost done?
Yeah, no, I prepared. When Mike sent out the email reminder about today's meeting and saying a few words about you and Jim, the first thing that came to my mind was, "Judy, Judy, Judy." I can't get, I couldn't get it out of my head, and I knew that that was a famous line spoken by, I thought, Cary Grant, a handsome, old-time movie star for you youngsters in the audience. But I had to check. So sure enough, I was correct. It was Cary Grant. But the most amazing thing to me was the movie those words were spoken in. The movie's title was "On Angels' Wings", and when I saw this title, I felt like I had an epiphany. Judy, you have been like an angel for the Franklin Public Schools. You've given 34 years of hard work and dedication to the district, a rare feat by any measure. You have devoted your career to making the children in the schools of Franklin academically strong and vibrant. And you have enlightened all of us with educational knowledge, much of what I took back to my own classroom. You have built and opened a beautiful new school for our children and community, and you have led this district with a quiet, gentle, yet stern style. I hope that you have fulfilled all of your career dreams here in Franklin, and I can say that you have always met and exceeded my expectations. It is your time now, Judy. You no longer have to come in early and read an educational text to help improve us or the district or yourself. You are now free to read Dr. Seuss to your grandchildren. You no longer have to influence leadership teams, but now you can influence Rick, your husband, to take short trips, not to bike as far and as fast as he does, to listen to new music instead of the hits from the 50s and 60s, and to work on small projects with you, doing a little at a time. You are now free to plan grandkids' birthday parties instead of recognition/retirement parties for a hundred, although your parties were always the best. You also have time now to work on your Elvis Presley impersonation. Because I don't know if you remember, but we had a party, a Christmas party at Janet Evans' house one year, the board did, and we were talking with Judy, and Judy whipped out, "Thank you. Thank you very much." And I still chuckle about it to this day. I still remember looking at her, thinking, "Wait a minute, she's so serious all the time." And she did that, so I still chuckle to this time. You're now free to be a wife and a mother, and most importantly, a grandmother, because now you have left this district in better shape than ever. Judy, you have been my educational leader, a role model, a mentor, and an influencer, and most of all, my friend, and I will miss you dearly. Things will not be the same without you, and I look forward to hearing about this next exciting chapter in your life. And please know I do consider you an angel and know that you've got a friend in me. Jim, I've known you for more than half of your 31 years here. Your diligence, intelligence, and frugality, which I don't really know if that's a real word, but it sounded right to me, have allowed the Franklin Public School District to provide the best of the best to our students and community. You have made programs and projects possible when we never imagined that we could. And I'm going to miss your honesty and sense of humor. I have to be honest, though, too. I am not going to miss going into your office. I don't know if I'm the only person who felt this way, but I always felt like I needed to put a hazmat suit on when I went into your office, not because it's dirty or disorganized or disheveled, quite the opposite. It was so pristine that I always felt like I was going to dirty it, and I never wanted to sit or touch anything. So I'm not going to miss that part. But thank you, Jim, for all that you have done to help accomplish for the Franklin Public Schools. I truly appreciate you and your dedication to the Franklin community, and I'll see you around the campfire.
Thank you. Thank you. I knew it would be a mistake to go last because Debbie was second to last. I knew she'd do a great job, and thank you, everyone else, as well. I will read, we present in opening doors every three months when it comes out, and so I am tasked with writing for that. And this is what I wrote for the upcoming opening doors for Franklin. On June 30th, an era will come to an end at Franklin Public Schools. Dr. Judy Miller, our district superintendent, and Mr. Jim Milzer, our assistant superintendent of business and operations, both will retire after distinguished careers of over 30 years in Franklin Public Schools. Dr. Miller began her career as a math teacher and moved to be principal at Robinwood and then Forest Park. After success in those roles, she moved to the district office to become the director of human resources and eventually our superintendent. I was fortunate to work closely with Judy. For the last two years, I've seen firsthand her passion and dedication as she guided FPS with tremendous grace through the most difficult time in education in recent memory. Mr. Milzer worked diligently to bring financial stability to FPS and has been a tremendous asset in maintaining the highest financial rating possible for our schools. He realized that FPS needs to be a good financial steward of your money. We look forward to a bright future with our new superintendent, but we have an energetic leadership team that has large shoes to fill. The Board of Education has every confidence in the new team, but we want to thank Dr. Miller and Mr. Milzer for all they have done for students over the last 65 years, if my math's right. Sorry, 65 years combined.
Okay, okay.
On a personal note, thank you so much. I've only been a board member for a little over three years, but you don't know what to expect when you come in, and you have both made it easy for the board and for the district and for your employees, both direct and down the line, to make Franklin a great place to work and a great place to learn. And you have certainly made this a better community. So I was talking with several people on the board, and we were thinking about a gift, and, you know, certainly no gift would be enough. So there are flowers, and there are also a gift for both of you. I know that at the recognition ceremony and retirement ceremony, Dr. Miller talked about biking with Mr. Milzer after they both retire. So perhaps these gifts will help in that, especially if they go at night.
Sure, go ahead.
Spin brakes. Ooh, to put on the wheels.
We can both be the same. As we know, biking can be difficult lately. So thank you very much, both of you. Does anybody else have any other announcements? Can't imagine anybody does.
If I can just, you know, thank everyone for their kindness and, you know, when I started, there were chickens running across the road on Mondays when I would go from Robinwood to Countrydale to deliver the mail because they had the St. Martin's beer every Monday. Really, the heart of Franklin's never changed. It's grown bigger and more diverse and more wonderful. But this has always been a great community, and I'm just very grateful that I got to have this as my home away from home, so thank you.
Definitely. It's been a wonderful place to work and a wonderful journey, working with great board members over the years who all had the same passion for making things as good as they possibly could. Sometimes different ideas, and that's all good. But that really helps us move forward and to do the best thing for our students, so thank you.
Thank you. Jim, how many meetings? You told me something about your 700th meeting.
It's somewhere in between 700 and 800 meetings, board meetings that I've been to and committee meetings. Some better than others, but quite a few.
All right. Thank you, both. And we'll go on so that you can be more comfortable. School board calendar, regular Board of Education meeting, Wednesday, July 13, 2022, at the ECC at 6:00. Annual meeting of electors, Wednesday, August 17, 2022, at the ECC at 6:00. And a regular Board of Education meeting, Wednesday, August 17, 2022, at 7:00 or soon thereafter as the annual meeting of the electors ends. Item 10, district administrator update, Dr. Miller. Item ten, district administrator update, Dr. Miller, please.
Okay, um, since our last Board of Education meeting, we've successfully concluded the twenty-one-twenty-two school year. There are a number of amazing highlights this year, but just to name a few, one of our schools was recognized as a National Blue Ribbon School. We enhanced our school safety by continuing to practice our drills and simulate a reunification process. And we demonstrated that Franklin Public Schools has some of the best athletes in the state, having several of them qualify for state champions, as state champions, including, of course, our football team winning, uh, the state championship. Among these great highlights, one of the favorites for everyone was the graduate walks at the elementary schools. To see the excitement and the pride of our students as they revisit their starting point, and their education was incredibly meaningful. Moving on now to summer, we've successfully started our summer school program this week. The elementary program is being held at Pleasant View, and we have four hundred and three elementary students enrolled. That's, um, over, um, two hundred and ninety-five more than last year. We have a hundred and eighty-five middle school students enrolled, and that's up, uh, by a hundred and thirty-four students. And at the high school, there are eighty-nine students, excuse me, enrolled in credit recovery, uh, for first-time credit. Enrollment varies, um, in other enrichment courses at the high school, including such things as ACT prep and performance training. Um, I would just mention that Ms. Anita Sunstrom takes the lead. See, you kind of made me cry in my notes.
So I wondered if it was the flowers.
No, it's, um, I got, she just got a little set of petals there. Pardon me. Um, where was I? Oh, Ms. Anita Sunstrom, um, she takes the lead in planning our summer school, and this is really just a shout out to her and the great work that she does getting that done for us. All the elementary and medical, middle school students who are waiting to get into summer school actually got in, so that was great. Coming up, there'll be a great opportunity for the community to be together at the Fourth of July celebration, and in August, uh, the National Night Out, so make sure you get to those things. In addition, the Franklin Educational Foundation is hosting a back-to-school celebration for Franklin Public Schools at a milkman game on Sunday, August twenty-first. And finally, I'd like to remind everyone, um, that the school district, along with the city of Franklin and the Civic Celebration Commission, is hosting a traveling Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall at Franklin High. Um, I was fortunate enough to visit it in Washington, D.C. recently, and, um, it is a replica of that, and it is, um, remarkable. So that is happening on June thirtieth to July third at our high school. It is open twenty-four hours a day, so please, uh, take some time to do that. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, item eleven, board reports, presentations, and other school board business. Twenty-two, twenty-three budget and staffing presentation, Mr. Millsor, Ms. Lankur, please.
Uh, tonight, we're introducing the first draft of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Uh, it is in board docs, uh, for you to review. At this point in the year, all of the important information that we need to do the budget is estimated. Uh, and that will remain estimated until October, when we get the last of the information we need, uh, to put out the final budget for the year. But this budget will get us started, and tonight, we'll go over, uh, some of the budget items, some of the highlights. Uh, Ms. Lankur will go over the staffing portion. And then you'll have three weeks to read through it at your leisure, ask any questions. Answers will go out to all board members. And, uh, you don't have to do that quickly, uh, because I will be, uh, assisting Mr. Crowe with answering those questions. Uh, it just seems kind of unfair to, uh, put out a budget and then ask him to answer the questions when he had nothing to do with the budget to begin with. So we'll work on that together. As we look at the budget, uh, of course, our main revenue sources are general state aid and property taxes. That makes up about eighty-one percent of our revenue, and those are also, uh, the portions of the revenue limit. As we know, the twenty-one-twenty-three state biennial budget really put, put more money into education, but did not increase the revenue limit per student. So it really gave no new money per student to school districts for two years. And as it's turning out, those are a bad two years to do it, uh, with the increase in the CPI. Uh, so instead, uh, the money simply flows through the school districts as property tax relief. Looking at enrollment, we're estimating an increase of twenty-five students, uh, with open enrollment in remaining stable and open enrollment out, uh, declining slightly. In the area of property taxes, uh, over the last five years, they've declined two-point-two percent. And for twenty-two, twenty-three, we're looking at a decline of about a hundred and seven thousand dollars, which equates to about five dollars per hundred thousand dollars of value on a home. In capital improvements, uh, we have a holdover from last year, uh, with the turf for the baseball and softball fields. Uh, that was not done because the, uh, we did not receive approval from the city for six months a- after applying for that. Uh, however, we are moving forward with it now, and, uh, we're doing this because softball is losing two fields that the city is repurposing the area for, uh, other city functions. And baseball is now a spring sport, so they lose more time to bad weather, uh, and, um, it's being dark in the, in the late afternoon. And turf is one-third the cost of adding additional fields to serve our students. It's also usable by other sports, as well as FIAID classes during the day, especially in those big outfield areas. Uh, we're putting in a completely new fire alarm system at Countrydale, uh, as long as all the parts arrive, uh, this summer. We're waiting for those. Uh, and then we're replacing the aging classroom projectors at the high school, uh, with displays, and then doing some of the exterior masonry work on multiple schools. Uh, as was indicated in the report that we received from our consultants. Uh, we're replacing all those coat hooks and shelves at Countrydale, creating two mothers rooms at the high school and installing ABA compliant casework. Uh, now for staffing information, Ms. Lankur will go over the, the information.
Thank you. Um, so for staffing for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, you'll see that we don't project any significant fluctuations. It's going to remain pretty steady. Um, so at this point, we are estimating a slight decrease of a point-six-nine assignment. Um, just going from level to level, at the elementary schools, you'll see that things are remaining pretty steady. Um, at the middle school level, a similar, um, things are remaining pretty steady. You will see that we did have an increase, um, our students are more interested in German. So we did see an increase at the middle school and the high school level for both of those world languages. Um, and then at the high school level, there's some slight fluctuations with the core courses just based on what students need to take in this particular school year. Um, but you'll also see an increase, um, to our family and consumer sciences area. Um, this is a really big interest for our students at the high school level. Um, and it's also a really difficult position to fill from a staffing perspective, so we were able to find someone great to fill that role for next year that we're, um, excited about and giving students that opportunity. Um, there's usually a significant waitlist as well for these types of programs from our students, so we're happy that we can give them that opportunity. Um, and then you'll see on the last page from the district-wide support, we added in the different staffing pieces that the board had previously been looking for from our, um, overall staffing. So you'll see that we added some information.
Can you reference a page?
Oh, I'm so sorry, I don't.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, sorry about that. Um, and you'll see at the bottom, it talks about our custodians, food services, administrators, and educational assistants and secretaries. Um, this is really a snapshot in time. Those numbers, more than any, tend to be, tend to fluctuate, um, from kind of, you know, year to year or semester to semester.
It's difficult to have, well, I know we're supposed to wait and ask our questions over, over time, so I'll be... It's always hard for me when we receive this, like, essentially in the meeting, so.
Well, I look forward to your questions.
Okay, thank you.
And you can ask questions, just like, this is part of the budget. So you can ask those over the next three weeks and get your answers at the, the next meeting. Uh, yeah, actually, get your answers ahead of time, uh, but then you can have discussion at the next meeting. This used to be a separate report, and we combined it with the budget when we redid the budget document.
Is there going to be a specific, um, staffing report in regards to, like, retention? And when can we anticipate that report?
Yeah, we started that last year in the fall, um, so we will bring that forward in the fall as well. Um, it just needs a little bit more time, because things will still fluctuate and change over the summer. Um, so just to provide you with the most accurate information, we'll have kind of a retention and turnover report along with the staffing presentation.
Can I ask, kind of echoing, um, what Dr. Beer is saying, it's hard, because we've, we just got this in the last half hour as we were sitting here, I guess. Um, I'm, this, the one thing that's really jumping out at me, obviously, um, we heard from our students tonight about the reduction in music, which is, um, disappointing. But I'm also seeing, we're reducing thirteen secretaries and educational assistants. Is that thirteen physical bodies? Is that something that will change over the summer as needs change? Or, uh, that just seems like a very large reduction in something that's pretty important.
Yeah, from this, it's more so a snapshot from one school year to another of where we currently stand. It doesn't mean that we wouldn't staff accordingly, based on the needs of the, um, of the schools. But it's kind of a, as a point in time of when this budget was created, this is the staffing levels that we had.
Okay. Staffing levels, that, the number, does this include postings? I, I guess I, I don't understand what changed to make thirteen fewer people logical? Are there fewer students who need EAs, are?
One of the changes is that the difference between COVID, staffing during COVID to maintain our COVID protocols and post-COVID staffing, that, that's a portion of it. Uh, but for this one, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't look at it too closely, because we're still in the staffing portion of, um, the summer as we go through. So this number could change, but for right now, that was where we were at. Uh, these could even out, um, over time.
What is your goal? Because it sounds like what you're saying is this is as many as we have right now, but it, we might have more because we're trying to get to X.
Uh, as we look at, uh, the staffing over the summer and how many students are in classes and all of that, that can change this. So this is, I would say, very preliminary at this point, and it's the first time that we've, uh, done this calculation and stuck this in here for the board. So, uh, we're not looking at huge reductions, little reductions, but this, this overstates it, I would say, on, on what's actually, what would actually happen.
Are the, are these bodies, or are these?
These are head, uh, head count.
Not FTEs.
No.
Not FTEs.
Because FTEs, I see is that only point-six-nine difference, right?
Right, in, in, right, in the certified staff.
So people will be working more hours then?
That can be, it, it could be a variety of things, but, but this is just a, just a head count from where we, where we were at the, uh, end of our last fall versus where we are this spring going into next year.
Will you, will you let us know when this is a reliable number?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It would, it'll definitely be, the next time we would have this, uh, would be in the fall, and it would be absolutely reliable, because it would be taken into account where, where we were at the time, which is schools starting and we have everybody in place.
Are, are the other numbers reliable numbers, or are these, are the, all these numbers simply where we are right now?
The, for the other employee groups, number of employees, it's where we are right now, but I wouldn't expect any of the others to change. Custodians, food service, those, those will be probably the same. Uh, but for this one, it, it's a bit of a moving target. Uh, and we could look at, we could look at doing it another way, uh, that maybe didn't look like this. But based on the data we had, um, this is how it came out. But I know that this isn't, we don't plan on staffing much lower. I mean, there's a, there's some reduction in hours, but not that many.
Linda, please.
So this is a head count, so the budget dollars support just this head count? Are there vacancies accounted for, or I'm confused as to, how do the budget dollars match up to this, this head count?
The budget dollars match up to this head count plus some vacancies.
Plus some vacancies?
Yeah.
That you're not including in?
I'm not including it because they're not.
So there's budget dollars available to go above and beyond the one-thirty-eight?
Right, I don't have a name associated with them in someone hired. So it could be that in the future, we combine those, and we have a head count and vacancies, uh, as a, as a number probably evens this out. We could do that.
Um, and is that, are they all equal positions? Like, they all work a certain number of hours, or does that vary quite a bit also?
Yeah, that varies.
What's the range that it can vary? Somebody can work ten hours, somebody can work thirty, or is it more, some work fifteen, some twenty, or how, what's, how, why is the range?
Probably from three to eight.
Three to, three to eight hours?
A day.
A day.
We look at things at per day, usually.
Oh, okay, so there's a lot of variability.
So I, I would just, um, point out that our educational assistants, um, the, the vast majority of them work with students with special needs. So we don't have a lot of just what we call regular educational assistants helping out in classrooms. The vast majority of these individuals work with children who have IEPs. So a team convenes and determines what level of support those children need. And, um, that's why the numbers can fluctuate, because it's based on the needs of the children. And if you would like to add to that in any way?
No, I was kind of scooting this closer, um, to try to find a spot to jump in. That's, that's exactly what it is. And throughout the summer, we also have new enrollments or students who are moving out of the district as well. So we do monitor, um, those student needs, again, all the way up through the beginning of the school year. Um, so at any time, you know, those numbers can increase or decrease. And that happens even throughout the school year as well, so.
Ideally, you want a child to, to be able to be independent, right? But on any given day, a child could enroll in school who needs someone right with them every minute of the day. So it is very much a number that can fluctuate based on the needs of the students with that particular employee group.
What about the food service? The reduction in three employees, is it because of, because you still, I'm going to be, still going to have the lunch program?
Yes.
Next year, too, so the number of students using the cafeteria will remain the same. So is there a reason that it is decreasing three?
Uh, they, they didn't fill those positions this year. And they're, they're going down a half a position, uh, in the high school, uh, because they, they've worked out a different way to do things. So they were positions that they didn't fill for a year, and then decided they just weren't going to try and fill them in the future.
Wasn't, didn't that result in fewer options for the students in terms of food? Didn't they basically shut down some lines?
So there was a point in which we couldn't find someone to hire.
Oh, I get, I understand, yeah.
So that was what, what the result of that.
Yeah.
It wasn't as if we didn't have the position, there just wasn't anybody applying for it.
Okay.
So hiring was a very big challenge this year.
So is this more of just a reflection of, we don't think that the hiring situation's going to get any different in terms of food service workers?
I, I would say so.
Okay.
Yeah, it, we've got a good core of people, and we have a couple that have come and gone, but it's very difficult. It, it isn't like it was five years ago that you could hire someone and they would stay quite a long time.
What, what do we think is going to happen with the, um, with the lunch program next year? Versus this year, it was, it was free lunch for everyone.
Right, yeah, it, it appears that it'll go back to paid, uh, like it was pre-pandemic, uh, with free and reduced for some students based on criteria, and then paid for everyone else.
I think then that will also translate to decreased usage of, because most of the kids who are using, it was free for everyone, so I think everybody was using it. But if someone has to pay, then automatically the number of students using the food service will decrease.
Is that what you saw?
We won't see it till next year.
We'll see it till next year.
But, but did it increase when lunch became free for everyone?
Yeah, people became very used to that. Uh, but it also cut down on the à la carte items that were sold, because no students had money.
Um, on the staffing page, um, is it safe to assume that most of the part-time positions reside in the district-wide, um, positions? As opposed to the building-level positions? I'm just trying to figure out, because your staffing document is reflecting bodies, whereas the budget document represents FTEs, correct?
So in terms of the difference between our certified staff at the building level versus that last portion?
Yeah.
Um, so the way that the FTE works is based on how many classes they teach in a particular day. So if the need of the student enrollments is only to have a teacher teach some of the courses in a part-time capacity, that's where you see some of those point-six-seven and point-five. Um, but, but in that last section, yes, that mostly reflects the majority of our part-time employees.
I'd love to be able to get a se- I'd love to be able to get a sense of what percentage of our employees, and I should ask you this, are part-time versus full-time and what programs they reside in, et cetera. So I'll save that for my questions, too.
I have a question on the world language, Spanish. We went, two years ago, we were at 5.42, we went down to 3.84, now we're at 5. Is that explained by enrollment?
So our enrollment in Spanish has been pretty consistent and increasing. So the increase in FTE you'll see is that we had some difficulty finding some Spanish teachers last year. So we did have some virtual sections that were taught. And so the goal for next school year is to remove those virtual sections as much as possible and have those classes back to in-person. So that's why you saw the staffing level increase.
Thank you. Following up on the concept of additional educational assistance based on student needs, things like that, and you're talking about based on enrollment and things, looking at the different sections that are reduced, particularly music, but also I see social studies. I mean, again, I just got this, so it's hard for me to find everything that I want to find. But I mean, if you had, we have new housing developments going up. You have maybe, say, 10, 15 new kids coming to the district. Are these positions that would be filled as soon as next year if you had the student needs? You know, when you're cutting positions, is it really only enrollment-driven? So that if you had additional people all of a sudden move into the district this summer who all wanted to, you know, for the sake of the students who are here tonight, all wanted to join the band, you would have to hire another band teacher?
We certainly monitor over the summer. Like you said, if we have an influx of students that have an interest in a particular program, I don't know if we would have an immediate, there's not a specific number of students, like you said, 10 students that want to take music or something like that. I don't know if there's a specific number, but we certainly monitor that and see what their interests are based on where they want to enroll and into what programs at what levels.
And what additional supports? You know, I see that, like, again, the social studies is down by almost a half of a position. Music is obviously going down. What, how much of a difference in enrollment is there next year versus this year in terms of what those teachers' course loads and things will be? And what support will there be for the remaining teachers in those departments to continue the high level of teaching and student learning?
Yeah, so we keep a couple of things in mind, obviously maintaining the class size policy. So that's usually what drives how many sections that we have at that level. And then how many sections per day each individual teacher can teach. So that's kind of how we eventually get to the head count and the needs of the different teachers. And then in terms of the support for those teachers, we certainly work closely with Mrs. Cody in the event that we have students that have specific needs in those particular classes. We work with her in terms of new students, in terms of changing classes or schedules. So she keeps a really good pulse on that and what we may need to change in terms of shifting the needs.
Please.
I'm interested in the concept of stacking classes. So when enrollments into very similar classes are low, those classes might be combined. Can you tell me, give me a sense of what sections that's going to be happening in this upcoming year to accomplish the staffing model you've presented?
I don't have specifics on that that I'd be.
Add it to my questions.
Add it to your questions and I'm happy to find out for you.
Just a question on Forest Park. Physical education is also steady growth, a new position every year. Is that just new, more classes? This is a middle school?
At the middle school in particular, I think students are more interested in taking some of those classes because we have really nice new state-of-the-art facilities that they're really interested in using that equipment, that they may have not had the opportunity to take specific type of classes before. So there's just new and interesting options that they want to participate in.
Do we add class, class up there?
In terms of sections of students?
Types of class, you know?
Yes.
We did, okay. Check the book.
Any other questions? I assume there will be a lot more in July.
Where's debt service, Jim? Do you? Did I miss debt service?
It's listed on page 16. I don't know if that's exactly what you're looking at.
There's some more stuff on debt service on page 29.
And the table of contents is clickable. If you just click on that, it'll take you to that page.
I think what you want is 29 and 30.
Can you, anything good going on there?
Wonderful things going on there.
I'd like to hear about.
We get to pay for the buildings that we have.
Okay.
There's been changes over the year, or years there because we had the refinancing, which still shows up in 2020, 21. And then there's some explanation of that, the fact that that saved taxpayers $2.7 million over the life of those bonds.
That savings in this budget? No.
There would be some savings in this budget, that's over the life of the bond, so 20 years. And then, let's see, for 22, 23, we're budgeting to defuse 1.51 million of that long-term debt. And then there's a debt schedule on the next page, which shows that going out to 2036, 37.
Did we defuse anything this year?
Yes, we did. I want to say 1.2 million.
Thank you.
So we look forward to receiving your questions as you have time to look at it. It's not meant to be an exercise where you scoot through as fast as you can and try and figure out questions. It's to give you a lot of time to look at it and ask us the questions that you have and get the answers ahead of time. So as we look at our budget calendar, in July, it's that first draft of the budget that we accept. In August, we have the annual meeting to go over the tax levy for the electors. And then in October, we have that final budget that's really our budget for the year. And then that's based on exactly how many kids we have at our September count. And it's based on what the state says they're going to give us in mid-October when we get that information. So there are a lot of notes, a lot of information in there that's written about what's going on in the numbers that you can go over, and I'll let you review that.
I do appreciate that format with all the extra. I don't have time to read it right now, but I will.
No, but it's there.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you. 22, 23, CISA 1 contract, Dr. Miller, please.
It is something that the board has to approve annually, is our contract with CISA 1. If you have any specific questions about some of these items, Ms. Cody would be able to answer those questions as they pertain to some of the items here. But I am looking for the board to approve the contract for 22, 23 with CISA 1.
How does it compare to last year?
I looked it up, last year it was 109,000.
Very similar.
109,000?
It was 109,000 though, last year.
Does it last expensive this year?
Much less expensive. And I didn't go through line by line to see what it was.
Were there add-ons during the year?
We did. I would say we had an increase in students providing services when we had a gap in. We had our, I'm sorry, my laptop died, so I can't, I'm not looking, so I'm just thinking here. We had our physical therapist who retired kind of after the school year started. And so between the time where she retired and we brought someone else on board, we contracted with them for those services. And then also ESY going into this extended school year services going into the summer this year. So there are things that do come up, you know, again, throughout the year as those needs present themselves, so.
How frequently does, I assume, I assume there are add-ons almost every year. Maybe you can add some color on that. How frequently is, this is an $82,000 contract. Is, it's likely to go up. Should this be a different way of, should we have a different way of saying if it goes up to more than 100,000, then we need to relook at it? Or is, what is the, what's the way it's been done in the past? And what do we need to, how do we need to do that going forward?
Yeah, I think that's kind of the purpose of it coming to the board meeting today, so you can take a look at that. I did go back and the difference is Project Success. You had three seats last year.
Oh, yes, yes.
And this year, we only have one.
Thank you.
So that accounts for the $20,000 difference.
Thank you.
So the other costs are almost exactly the same. It's just fewer seats at Project Success.
Project Success was 45,000 because I just called it up myself. So that's, with that out of there, it's actually, again, substantially higher than this year.
Project Success is, in this particular contract, is 16,000.
In this one that we're looking at for this year, last year's was 45,000.
Right, so that's why this contract is less than last year.
No, but he's saying that taking the Project Success, that difference out of the way, the overall total this year is higher than last year.
Yeah, by about $9,000. And again, I didn't incorporate line.
$9,000, okay.
Line by line, but.
Okay, got it.
I mean, it also, again, our services for students with hearing impairments, like there are different oncology, different services that, again, depending on students coming to us, they provide unique services that we don't have within the district. So we review all of those IEPs before we make the proposal to them for services.
Do you just need a charger? Do you want to use my charger?
Pardon?
Do you just need a charger? Do you want to use my charger?
Oh, that would be great, thanks. I was going to go get one during the budget conversation and I didn't want to walk out.
Can I ask what Parents United is about?
Say that again, please.
Parents United Fiscal Agent, I'm assuming we're the fiscal, what is that program? Parents, it's a line on the.
What does Parents United do? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, or what is it?
So it's a consortium. There are several districts who come together and we talk about different topics that would be pertinent for families. And so, for example, they might, one of the sessions they had this year was around high anxiety, you know, with students or, you know, ADD or how to advocate for your child when you're new to special ed services. So we all like contribute, like we look at what our needs are and then we say we'd like to bring someone in who can speak to parents. So it's free to all of our parents. And they're, I want to say like monthly or every other month, we do have those opportunities, again, for people to come together. And it's just a learning session. And it's valuable. I mean, we've had, we've also had, it's open to staff members as well. So we've had staff members go and listen in as well as parents, so.
Is that the group that Mrs. Whitman was speaking about or is that part of that?
No, the group that she was speaking to is, so there, I attend the CISA meetings that are representatives from the district, like a district coordinator. What she's referencing is, it's like parents and there are also educator, education representatives from each district who come together and plan like a trivia night or whatever it might be. So they, those are some of the things that they talk about. So that's a separate group from this one.
But it doesn't have a cost associated with it? I assume that's why we're not seeing anything on the budget?
No.
Or the contract, I should say.
Yeah.
Oh, shoot, you know what?
So the biggest expenses are really the audiologist and the teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing. How many students do we have that have those type of needs in their IEP in our district, approx?
Probably between five and 10, maybe. And they provide outstanding service.
Sure.
And you've had consistent service providers and they're excellent, so.
Not enough to have our own person on staff.
Doesn't sound like it, yeah.
No.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the CISA 1 contract for 22, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Thank you.
Mr. Alex Indrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Aye.
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
Dr. Beer?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
And Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. 22, 23, SWSA agreement. Dr. Miller, please.
Well, as you're aware, we're active members of SWSA. We actually have been for many years. And I would recommend that the district continue as members of this important organization. And to do so, we would need to pay our annual fee. So I'm looking for a motion to approve our membership with the SWSA. Do you have anything to add?
I think it's a bargain since we all pay the same amount. And we definitely don't have all the same enrollments, so. Yeah, I would make that motion to approve the contract.
Second. All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? I think we need a roll call again, please.
Dr. Beer?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Alex Indrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Aye.
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. SWSA update, please, Ms. Witkowski and Dr. Miller.
I'll say that we had our first in-person meeting in probably two years. I was surprised that the building had totally changed. So I was looking.
They're in a different building.
They're in a different, brand-new building. So I was a little lost for a little bit, but I did find it. It's a fabulous, modern building, so technology's all in place. And it was the last meeting of Terry. Terry was the director that's leaving. And Mara is the new one coming in. So she was there. And so it was more of an exchange of the leadership. But we did have a round discussion about what the priorities would be in the next year. And those have been highlighted on the document that provided to you. And it's really financial, it's the budget. So that's what we'll be working on. Other things that came in line was workforce challenges, compensation, and leadership development, and also mental health. So lots of good discussion and it'll be a challenge next year going forward. Because education is something people are interested in.
I guess we just, you know, keep an eye on what legislation gets proposed next year. There were some unusual pieces that were proposed at the end of this year. And it's a year of campaigning and so it could get very interesting. I've talked to Ms. Benning about really paying close attention to that and that this would be the organization that would be really helpful for her to do that.
All right, any further questions for SWSA update? All right, thank you. Let's move on to the graduation update. Dr. Miller, please.
Included in the board agenda here are the comparison costs of the graduation from this year as proposed to when we had it at the sports complex in 2019. So you can see that it costs the district an additional $2,543 to hold graduation at American Family Field. I would add that attendance was probably an all-time high. We sold 1,248 tickets. We sold one thousand two hundred and forty-eight tickets. We provided approximately three hundred and seventy tickets to students. They also got free tickets for their family members, so that was another like fifteen hundred tickets. So we're, we were probably somewhere around three thousand that day in the, in the stadium. And I think people were quite comfortable there, they could spread out and things went very smoothly. So we have that information to share with you today and certainly as the boards, you know, pervy to move forward with whatever graduation plans they'd like to make for the future.
What was the capacity of the sports complex?
I couldn't tell you that offhand, but I can tell you that for a number of years, students were limited with how many students they could have. And then that last year, I think we had it there, they weren't limited. We just kind of let people come and it was incredibly crowded and they're sitting on bleachers and it was crowded.
Although we, we only used half the facility.
Correct, right, there is another set, well, you use part of it to line kids up, right? So that part's taken, but it's just to set it up so that people can actually see. And then when you have more people, you have more setup costs too. Because you have to rent more things, you know, for people to see and sit. So that, that's been my experience.
Well, okay, well, I, I do want you to make note though that we are, we're spending more. Our parents are spending almost ten thousand dollars to graduate, to come and graduate at the sports complex. I'm sorry, at, at Miller Park, whatever, Am Fam, whatever you want to call it. It's ten thousand dollars that could be spent in our own community. We could, if we don't like the sports complex, why don't we improve it?
Because we don't own it.
We can, we could still work with people, we can talk to people. We have, the Milkman play at a place that also could, if we looked around, I just, I really think we should bring it back to Franklin.
I think it's worth looking at if we can have a backup facility. I think the tricky thing is going to have a backup indoor facility that can hold a comparable number of people that we would have to rent in addition, I'm not, I'm not opposed on principle to that idea, but I am opposed to the idea of having to rent an indoor facility and an outdoor facility.
We don't have to rent it, I mean, all high schools across the state have plans, you know, they do it outside and they, you can do things like.
So I guess we have to decide how many people, okay, so then we'd have to have alternate dates and how many people do we think it's reasonable for a student to bring to graduation? So I think we should set those goals and sort of come to a consensus around what is a reasonable number of people for students to be able to ask to come to graduation, right? Because this is for the students, right? Of all the things we do, their graduation is the one thing that's most clearly for them.
But it is the thing that as a district, that's what we do, we graduate students.
Yes.
You know, the community should celebrate in that.
So then we should also budget in how many community attendees would want to attend.
We should invite them to Miller Park maybe and see how many come, maybe we could add on the annual meeting we're having the graduation.
Last year there was a survey that was sent out, I believe, right, to families to assess what people thought about having it at Miller Park, American Family Field, or is there going to be a survey this year?
I, I'm not aware that there was a planned survey, no.
I'm not sure what that would do or why.
Well, I think the survey was, was, it was the first time we were having it there and we wanted to see how it was received by the people that were there.
About every, the whole community, what's the whole community think about holding it there? Not just the graduates.
So let's think about some items that we'd like to know about before we discuss this again. For me, one item I'd like to know about is how many people were students traditionally able to invite to graduation when it was held at the indoor facility? I'd like to know what the feasibility would be of scheduling multiple dates in case of rain. I'd like to know about what would be the cost of renting an indoor backup facility and using an outdoor facility such as the Milkman Field? If, if someone were to tell me, and then they will provide this indoor backup space for free, well, that would be certainly a game changer.
Well, and what is the capacity at Milkman Field?
It's big, it's like eight thousand, I think.
We, we had a business alliance meeting at The Rock and they have this indoor soccer field which is air-conditioned, has anybody approached them as to what it would cost to have a?
That's certainly something we should look at for next year because.
And what would the capacity be of that space?
And do they want people on their turf?
Yeah.
I mean, that's ultimately the question.
It's indoor turf, it's.
Wow, if, if they're planning, if they're going to be doing that, then we'd have to go again and look at.
We had tables and chairs set up when we had.
Absolutely.
So they will accept chairs, but do we have to provide the chairs?
Correct.
And are they.
Are they looking to get in the business of hosting large events, would they be buying chairs, yeah.
It's certainly something to look into because that, that is a large facility that is, that could, looks like it could feasibly hold our graduation.
Yeah.
It rained, it rained during graduation, at least when I was walking in. I'm not sure if it was raining because the roof was closed and we could hold it. But it rained during graduation. I've been to graduation at both the sports complex and the Miller, I'm sorry, I always call it Miller Park. It's American Family Field. And overwhelmingly to me, it's a better experience at American Family Field.
I agree.
But if there was a place in Franklin that could hold the, that, that could hold, certainly, I, I'm certainly open to that.
Yeah. I think if we went back to the, that facility?
Sports.
The sports, not the sports complex, but the one by The Rock.
Yeah, Mosh, sorry.
We're going to end up with the same situation that we have at the sports complex and that is people sitting flat on folding chairs. And it's very difficult to see your child graduate or take pictures or things like that if you're sitting like that, because I've experienced both things as well.
I would just, I mean, as a parent of a graduate, I thought the Miller Park, American Family Field experience was phenomenal and in talking with the many other parents and family members of graduates that I am privy to talking to over the last couple of weeks, I haven't heard anybody complain about, I know there, you know, there might be people in the community, but in terms of the families who are there and the students who are there, it was a very positive experience and there was plenty of space to spread out. You could sit at different levels, you had the Jumbotron, you could see what was happening and really feel like you were celebrating each student with, you know, time on the, you know, you could like really see each person whenever else, it, it was a very positive experience.
How did you feel? I was three graduates there in the audience, how did you feel?
All three of us were actually at the last sports complex graduation too because we're in band. And the Am Fam field was way better because we weren't sweating buckets.
Neither were we.
It was comfortable, I don't know, like I could spread out, I could, I don't know, I'm fairly tall. I could like put my feet out, I was comfortable, it wasn't like, God, when do I get to go home? But if anything, I was like, I'm kind of hungry, but. And they were very fast. The concessions were. They were, but it was air-conditioned, I could see everyone, Jumbotron.
I liked the Jumbotron, honestly, that was pretty cool because you could like look up and wave and you could do something cool and wave to your family that was up there and like I got my moment with my mother up there and that was pretty cool, I loved that, like, you know, it was fun.
And you get to say, hey, I graduated in Am Fam Field instead of, hey, I graduated at the Milwaukee County Sports Complex.
Yeah, like how many people get to graduate in an M L B stadium, like just.
Which would, to me, would bring up somewhat of an equity question, but I'm just putting it out there. Because not every student, you're right. How do we can do that? Why us?
I think we had this discussion the last time too. There's definitely some concern from some community members that this is a Franklin event and must be done in Franklin. But we have to compare apples to apples and not apples to oranges, which I mean is that, what is American Family offering us? Is it offering us good logistics? Proper planning where we don't have to be thinking about two or three venues at the same time? Comfort, Linda, you talked about family paying around ten thousand dollars. But it's, when you go to a grocery store, and when I go to grocery stores, it's my right to pay ten dollars or five dollars to what I want to. And we, as a board or a district, cannot enforce on the parents not to spend the ten thousand dollars for the tickets if they want to. So it's their choice and they want to do it, I think, the survey has shown. But I think as a Franklin community member, definitely want to bring the business to the district. But we have taken into consideration the entire picture whether the Milwaukee Sports Complex is able to accommodate the same logistics of, you know, we were able to kind of have it on Zoom or whatever the link was, you know, we were able to have that, live stream and all that stuff. So I think we have to take into consideration the entire picture and not only zoom into, two thousand five hundred fifty, two thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars is a amount, is not a small amount, you know, because we, we have to ensure that the district benefits because the district pays for the education and the district must benefit from the graduation event also. But at the same time, we have to take into consideration the students and the parents, what their desires are.
We're parent tickets free. Each student received up to eight free tickets. Okay. Correct?
Four.
Four?
Four.
Oh, okay. So that, the ticket sales for nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars, those were extra tickets that people chose to buy. Yes. Okay.
Yeah, if you, so a family was not limited. Other years, a family might be limited to how many people they could bring. If you wanted to bring ten, fifteen, twenty people to graduation, which I know some families did, you were able to buy the ticket and, and have as many people as you, as you wanted. You got four tickets given to you as a family.
Okay, thank you.
Each student.
We didn't have the whole band there, band, band is optional, it was not the whole band.
Well, the reason the band.
Because of the time of year, Linda, not because of where it was.
The reason the band was.
It is a factor because it's, when it is, is a factor because we can't have the stadium until that date.
So the, the whole band.
So it is associated with the facility.
The whole band was not there because it was after the school year had ended, so when.
It's probably always going to be that way.
When, well, we don't, we don't know that, but when graduation happened before the end of like final exams, banned students would be more so required to come because it was still part of the class. Whereas now the school year has ended, so it was an optional thing. And because of our COVID numbers, we know banned numbers were down in general. So it's possible the ban could be twice as large next year with the increased number of students who are going to be in band.
So I don't think we're getting very far at this point, so if there's any additional, like, like Linda, I, I really, I get the sense that you want it to be in Franklin and nothing is going to change your mind. So I've suggested some things that could potentially change my mind for further discussion. Do you have anything that could potentially change your mind?
Well, I think it should be in Franklin.
Okay, well then let's stop talking about it because we.
Well, we have to work to, you know, we have to check on these other places then.
No, I think even I support.
There you go, that's what we can do.
Even I support, I want to support each and every business because this is a district, this is, you know, we must be able to support, but I think definitely as Alan has mentioned about possibly kind of, you know, if that Rock has any options on this stuff, we can definitely look into that. We must do each and every effort to support the Franklin businesses because this is our district and the celebration must be done, but we have to take into picture the entire whole thing rather than kind of, you know, looking at one aspect, so.
It's worth looking at the different options. But just because something is in Franklin doesn't mean it'll necessarily be better. And just because you graduate in Milwaukee doesn't mean that you have any less love for Franklin because the graduation ceremony happened somewhere else.
And also, yeah.
But our family had dinner in Franklin after graduation. Franklin businesses did not suffer necessarily because it was someplace else.
Yeah, I think the concept of, I have seen some concept that having a graduation out of Franklin causes a loss to the Franklin business, which I don't see because if individual family has decided to have the celebration in a restaurant in Franklin, they are going to go to a restaurant in Franklin, irrespective of where the graduation is. So Franklin losing economic revenue just because the graduation was done somewhere else doesn't seem to be realistic to me because if the.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that's, I, I agree with you, I don't think that's a straight line.
I think it's worth continuing the conversation.
But I think it's, I certainly think it's.
Put this on the agenda when we have further information.
Yes, agree.
We say, Mike, let's put it on the agenda in the future when we have further information. And I look forward to you being firmly that it should be in Franklin no matter what.
Like every other high school in the state.
That's not true.
It's not true.
I don't think that's true.
Except, okay, Oak Creek, so, again.
One, McGowan ago had it at Am Fam too.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Yeah, Greenfield graduated in Franklin.
So.
Greenfield graduated in our.
They graduated at the baseball field because I think they have a pretty big gym that they can use for a rain. I think that is their backup, isn't it?
Their backup is their gym.
Their backup is their gym because they have space. We would not be able to use our gym as a backup. We wouldn't even be able to get two parents per student in our gym.
Middle school? No, we talked about this last year.
Moving on.
Well, and I believe, Mrs. Christie, you can maybe confirm for me. Didn't Mr. Fisher approach The Rock for information on having the, all right, okay, the graduation there and The Rock did not respond? So it's, could be possible The Rock really doesn't want to entertain necessarily graduation there also.
But I don't know the answer.
Right, yeah, because they said they never responded, right.
There we go.
Certainly something to look into.
So you will have to charge someone with looking into that, the costs involved, I would suspect.
I will convey this information to Ms. Bennen so that she can begin to investigate further these questions and then she can discuss them with Mr. Sprague and certainly by January you'll have to decide because that's when these contracts kind of have to be drawn up. There are more school districts getting interested in having their graduation there. I think McGowan ago was there and one other district was at American Family Field, so it could get competitive. I think Oak Creek had a contract for like three years to lock in, four years to lock in. So there's more to talk about, but I, to answer the question, I'd be happy to convey this to her and then you and she can continue that discussion.
All right, item F, board retreat discussion. So there is a list of topics we have talked about for past board retreats. I know Linda sent me, sent me a few ideas for board retreats as well. This is what we've done in the past, does anybody have any, I, I think, did we decide on, we were talking about the date, is it October?
Yeah, it's October twelfth because it will follow the meeting where Dr. Mo goes through the coherence plan. So you get the information about what the whole district's working on so that you can establish your strategic priorities as one part of your retreat and then, of course, anything else you wanted to do during that time. So that's why it's in October, so that you hear kind of the final tactics that the district's engaging in for the coherence plan. But you can build on this, you can do book studies, you can do all kinds of things, you know.
It's so hard for me to just suggest things out of thin air. I wonder if you could direct us to some resources that might provide some suggested topics, because otherwise.
Mike, did you say that Linda had some ideas?
Yeah, I have.
Linda sent me something.
I did, okay, what did I send you? Oh, yeah, there was actually, there's a W A S B that had a, a training session coming up in July where it's, the whole board goes, it's on governance, but obviously that's kind of happening next week or early July.
So one of the things that, one of the things that I've found more helpful than others in the past is, is we've had W A S B come and talk to us about a topic here as a workshop before the meeting. Rather than, well, I think a book study is, is a good idea. It's also not, not everybody can make it or it becomes, you know, unless we, unless we make it mandatory, then it, then it doesn't, it's not necessarily helpful for everyone. And I think when we, aside from having a retreat, when we, in the, in the past, we've had a six o'clock workshop and then a seven o'clock meeting some month when it wasn't quite as, quite as busy and I think those are, I think those are more effective to do and we can come up with a topic.
Although I keep thinking, you know, we have all these, the new leadership team, I mean, everybody's new. Can we wait till October before we, shouldn't we do a summer thing, get to know them or some kind of?
I would agree with you, Linda, I think there could be some.
Before the school year starts, maybe we know these people or?
Well, I understand the timing of, of this with the coherence plan for this kind of discussion, but I don't think there'd be anything wrong with doing some type of get-together.
Get-together, yeah.
Maybe not setting board goals, but setting some rapport among. Maybe not setting board goals, but setting some rapport among this new team.
Yeah, I think that's very important.
New team, right.
All right, I can be tasked with planning a social event.
Oh, okay, it could be a social event.
Angie, would you like to plan a social event?
You know it.
And then I think in October, once you set your priorities, then you'll know what development you need to achieve them.
Yeah.
Like, okay, if we're going to have this as our goal or priority, we're going to need to learn more about this. And then you could plan some development throughout the year. You just take it one step at a time instead of like you said, just kind of throwing ideas out there. Have it relate to what you're working on.
I would also be interested to see what Ms. Bennon, if she has any thoughts about things she's done with previous boards that might be helpful. I'm sorry, Anna, I'm tripping you.
No, I was just gonna say, I feel like we did that last year where, you know, we did have a couple workshops. And I know different years, there have been different workshops throughout the year. So to set some goals in October and then have some more of these workshops, you know, six o'clock before a seven o'clock meeting throughout the rest of the year, I think that would be effective.
Yeah, and I do, I do like the idea of having a social gathering where we have a lot of new people coming on board. And so it would be nice to get to know those people, maybe apart from talking about.
They might want to get to know us too.
And vice versa.
Yes, I would think so. All right, I think that we can move forward from that and, and work on that. Treasures report is available in Board Doc's library. Board liaison reports. Does anybody have a board liaison report?
I just want to re-resurrect the ad hoc communication committee. I would like to get some dates on the calendar for us to have, to sort of set some of these large, larger community coherence meetings. So if it's okay with y'all, when I sit down for my initial meeting with Ms. Bennon, I'd like to sort of bounce ideas off of her in terms of that's something she'd like to combine with some of the meetings she's doing, if she has a vision for those, so that we can get those on the calendar and get things rolling. And then I think we should also have a conversation about whether the strategies that we've implemented thus far are meeting the goals that we want them to and if we should plan to continue them into the new school year. So let's plan to have sort of a communications update plan in our August meeting, if that's all right with the group. So any input before then?
I think that's a great idea.
Good point. Okay.
Excellent.
I attended the promotion ceremony for the Franklin Middle School. The jury to get it was very lovely to see this young men and women, you know, getting excited for the high school. And it was a very nice evening, I guess. I didn't think they had a dance after that, you know, after 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
It was a very nice event.
We are signed up for the Fourth of July parade. I'll send out our location or our spot to you, a little bit closer to the event.
Candy's back there.
Yeah, I saw it.
Do we have enough this year?
Um, I would.
We did talk about that, didn't we?
Well, I don't know, we'll see.
I saw Lisa hauling it.
Yes.
Hauling it in, I was like, what are you up to?
Yeah, 10,000 pieces of candy.
That's it?
That's one of the half times more than we had last year, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I haven't had a board liaison meeting yet with the new, you know, my new school assignment. But our Franklin Education Foundation had a successful golf outing last Friday. What a beautiful, I wasn't able to be there because I had to actually work my real job. But I understand it was a beautiful day and a success if anybody who was there wanted to.
It was a beautiful day. Alan and, Alan and Linda played with Annalee and Chris.
Your husband?
And I played right behind them. I saw a number of good shots out of me.
I think you saw all three of them.
Well, the ones with the marshmallow were particularly good.
We have the second worst score of all the four.
That's okay, that's good. Did you have fun?
Yeah, yes, it was fun.
And I helped set up.
Yes. Angie helped set up.
Andrew Miller helped check people in.
It was a team event all around, but very exciting. And then just another plug for the Milkman Game that is benefiting the foundation. And also if anybody wants to nominate awesome teachers, those nominations are open through June 30th for the Education Foundation. Excellent Teacher Award. We all have excellent teachers in Franklin, so we should highlight those people.
A plug for the Milkman Game.
Which day is it?
August.
I guess 21st, it's a Sunday.
At 1:00. Sunday, August 51st, 1:00.
I did want to say that I also got to the high school, my last visit before I move on to the next school and got to see Gold Block because I've always wanted to know what goes on there. It was Mr. Vole's Gold Block. It was the last meeting of the seniors, so we had these same kids since we were freshmen. And interesting group of kids. I met the lady that is going to West Point. She was part of that group. She looks just like anybody else.
They all do till they get there.
Then they always were. So it was, it was good to see how that worked and I look forward to seeing how that gets rolled out and all the good things that are happening at the high school.
Thank you. School and community engagement reports.
There was one other thing I did. The, the chamber actually got a slot to volunteer at the farm today. And I showed up.
Good for you. What'd you do?
I washed lettuce, but you got to see all the, it was really a large group of young, younger people that are in business around Franklin. I did get paired up with a young woman who graduated from Whitefish Bay and she was actually, she was an intern with another organization. So it was, it's always good conversations and at good cause.
Thank you, anyone else? I have several. I was at the Franklin Business Park Consortium meeting. Andy Thompson was there as well. And I will be going to those meetings monthly as part of the new liaison assignment. And Mr. Thompson and Dr. Mo and I will be meeting with some of those people as part of the Saber Business Alliance as well to improve the internship possibilities going forward. And the Business Park Consortium is hoping to, is hoping to meet and present to the board sometime in the fall. So, so I think that's all fantastic.
Yeah, a new group or is it?
Uh, no, it's not a new group. It's kind of a new group for us though, to be involved with. So, so I'll be excited to keep going to those meetings and have them at the board. We'll, we'll talk about a time in the fall to meet with them and report back on that. Dr. Miller and I were at the Community Health Planning Session yesterday at The Rock. And I think we got a good start on talking about the future of Franklin and how we can, how we can improve health outcomes, improve the parks. There was, I don't know, there's probably 40 people there, Judy.
Who's running that or?
Lauren Gottlieb is the new Courtney Day.
Okay, so it's with the public health.
Yeah. I was prepping some more information and that for your message this Friday because I don't have a ton to share with you. So I will share more about that, who was there and what the goals were and what the priorities ended up being. So more to come on that, but it was well-run and it was very well represented by various sectors and it was good.
And I, and I do think that if anybody is interested in, in being involved in that going forward, I, I think it is, please tell me and, and we can work with, we can work with Lauren on, on getting involved. I suggested that maybe she talked to Ms. Cody. Certainly there was a lot of talk about mental health. So, you know, the school district has a lot to do with that. And there was also some diversity talk and, and how mu, how diverse the community is, is becoming. And so, so I'll be talking with you, Dr. Khan, about, about you or somebody, somebody in your community being involved in that group because I think that, because I think that's important. And Lauren thought so as well. But if anybody else is interested, please let me know. And I'm meeting with the mayor tomorrow morning for coffee, so we'll report back on that.
Tagging on to your Saber Business Alliance and what Alan had mentioned, there was the Saber Business Consortium Breakfast. Is that what it was called?
I went to.
That was like the last couple of weeks of school. It seems like a long time ago, but it was actually after our last meeting.
Okay.
It was in that timeframe, which I just thought was really interesting to see how many different people were there who were part of that business consortium, who then offer different apprenticeships and internships and things like that for our students. And I think that kind of got the ball rolling for getting into, you know, having a little more board representation and things like that, which will just foster those relationships a little bit more. So I thought that was really neat to see how those pieces all come together.
Agree completely. And I know Maggie got that scholarship last year. I know the part of the meeting was they want, they would like to have, they'd like to maybe up the level of scholarship that they offer. So, you know, all these are, all these are good, good things happening, so.
One other community engagement kind of thing was, again, since our last meeting, the music department did have the Jazz at the Park, which was kind of a holdover from Jazz Cabaret that used to happen in February. It was supposed to be jazz at, at the park, not in the park, but at the park, Forest Park.
Yep.
It rained and was like 40 degrees that day, so it was actually in the park, in Forest Park. But it was a really great celebration. It was huge turnout of community members and family members and things. And all the choir, band and orchestra all performed different, you know, in different ways, different groups, some of the kind of side groups and things like that. And it was just a really great celebration for the end of the year. So it was fun to see lots of community members. I had a couple of grandmas told me they came from far away, that they weren't going to miss it. They, you know, and they loved it because it was a lot of that big band music. This is the music we grew up with. I'm so glad our students, you know, get to learn about this, you know, and not just traditional music. They kind of shook their, you know, like all traditional music. So it was just, it was a really neat event, so nice to see the community engagement there too.
Thank you, anyone else? All right, I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851C to discuss compensation of represented employees.
So moved. Second.
All right.
Yes, the roll call.
Roll call, please. Sorry.
That's okay. I vote aye. Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Aye.
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
Dr. Beer?
Aye.
We are in closed session at 8:03.